Before each council meeting, to recognize special organizations, special events, and things that need to be passed on to you in a very brief and recognized fashion. But tonight, we have a very special presentation that I'd like to ask one of our individuals to come down and... And here he is.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to present this to you since you have been with the Finance Officers Association for a number of years, and I know this is an opportunity to recognize some very special people in Pearland. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for the job you guys do at your level, because it gives us guidance and recognition, and also lets us know how we're doing sometimes. So, maybe I'll hear something about how we're doing tonight.
You will.
Oh, very good. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Rogers. I'm the Director of Finance for the City of Webster. I'm also past President of the Government Finance Officers Association of Texas. I'm here on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, who's pleased to announce that the city of Pearland, Texas, has received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. In fact, over 30 years you've received this award. So, you should have somebody doing this regularly, and that's a good thing. It's a very good thing. This award represents a significant achievement by the government entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. There is no award for we accounting geeks bigger than this. And so, it's quite the accomplishment. In order to receive this award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget document serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. The budget document must be rated proficient in all four of these categories, and 14 mandatory criterion within those categories. So, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the city of Pearland, to Cynthia and her staff, John McCarder... Wait. Neely Walker, and Rachel Winslow. Did I say that correctly? Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor.
John, would you like to make some comments?
No, but I will. Just thanking all the staff for here, my staff who are escaping the limelight. It's obviously busy this time of year, and this is a nice reminder of the good work we do. And thank you to Cynthia for your leadership throughout the process. See you next year.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a council meeting. City Council of City of Pearland for... This is almost the last of August hanging in here on top of us, and August the 12th, 2019. If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by Councilmember Owens and Councilmember Hernandez will give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, Lord, we thank you for the day that you've given us, and thank you for the blessings and the prayers that we've received from you, Lord. And, Lord, this weather that we have, and we know there's unrest, and if this is any indication what hell's going to be like, Lord, let's just change it around so we'll go in the opposite direction. Dear Heavenly Father, we really thank you for everything that you've done for us, for so many things that we are thankful for, to be in the state of Texas, be in the United States, and be in the best city in Texas, in Pearland, Texas. Lord, we pray that you watch over our men and women in Armed Forces, and our first responders that we have here in Armed Forces, Lord, which is in the U.S. and the international, Lord. Be with them, and be with their family while they're gone. Put your arms around them, Lord, and bless them, and bring them back home to us as safe. Ask this prayer in your name. Amen.
Please join as we do our pledges to the U.S. flag, followed by the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honoring our Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you. That's the truth.
Thank all of you for being here tonight, as we proceed through the process of our council meeting. And we've had a nice presentation from the Government Officers Finance Association to some of our members in the Finance Department, and I think that's very special that we've have them recognized, because it's a tough job they have working on items. Moving in our agenda, item three is where we'll call. All of our council members are here except for Councilmember Reed and Little. Moving further in our agenda to item number four, citizen comments. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've received no notification of anybody who'd like to speak to us under public comment, so I think we're free to move forward, Mayor.
No presenters, eh?
No presenters, Mayor. We're good.
Everybody's a good listener, and I think that's important as well. Thank you so much. Moving in our agenda, item five, public hearing, which I shall open at 6:35, which is a Dr. Public Hearing, Staff Review.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. This is a public hearing of the City Council to consider the abandonment of an unused 60-foot right-of-way that's located at the intersection of Magnolia Parkway and FM 1128. It's called Kincaid Road. And again, it's an old 60-foot right-of-way, which is not being used. Actually, as we speak, CenterPoint is removing the electric poles from that right-of-way. And so, it's been requested by the property owners to abandon this. As you can see by the map on the screen above, that this is a 60-foot right-of-way that, of course, bisects the property. The property's owned by Signature Properties, and the owners of the property are here this evening. That's Mike Pollack and Jennifer Evans. They'll be here to answer any questions that you may have under the comments section from the developer. But as you can see, in this particular instance, the Magnolia Parkway and, of course, Manville Road, FM 1128, provide access to these properties. And so, this right-of-way is no longer necessary, and will actually pave the way for the development of this property, which is zoned for general business-type development. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Staff review, which has just been completed. Moving in our agenda to citizen comments. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Has any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed right-of-way abandonment? Any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed right-of-way abandonment? At the final time, any member of the audience like to speak either for or against this proposed right-of-way abandonment? No contest, Mr. Perez.
Moving next, item is council and staff discussion. Starting with the council. Councilmember Orlando.
Seems to be pretty straightforward to me. Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for my indication, so right now, that the right-of-way, once the right-of-way will be abandoned, is it the same ownership on either side of the property?
That is correct. I'd be happy to let them answer the question, but yes, it's the same ownership, two different named owners, but it's the same property interest, so it's unity of ownership, yes.
Okay. So, I guess the biggest issue is that the driveway that they now get access to, that will fall back into the ownership, or at least partially in the ownership, where the house is located, so the house will still technically have legal access through Manville Road?
And just to clarify, the person that's living in that house right now will be moving out of that house, and that house is going to be torn down, and so, being abandoned there.
Okay. On the off chance that they don't move forward with that, we would still have legal access? I guess my question is kind of leans toward, we're not going to cut them off to where if they have... If they decided they want to make improvements on that house, they'd have to tear it down. They'd have to build a road to get to the house.
Yeah. I think I'll let Jennifer come down and speak specifically to that situation.
Next, we have...
This young lady's going to speak for us. Mayor, if you would please state your name and address for the purpose of the record.
Sure. I'm Jennifer Evans, and we are the owners of 5205 Kincaid. We own the house as well. The house is... We own the house as well, and the tenant has moved out, and the contractor, Chair of Demolition, has been released to take the house down. This is all part of a development of the detention area for the corner that council approved a CUP for a 7-Eleven. So, all of this is part of that corner being developed.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your comments.
Just one quick question. This requires two readings, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And then, the first item under new business this evening will be the first reading of this ordinance.
I just... Maybe it feels kind of sloppy to do... If the house is going to get abandoned, maybe we should hold up on the second reading until the house is torn down and abandoned. That way, there's not... Unless there's a certainty that the house... If the plans don't move forward with the 7-Eleven, and the right-of-way's abandoned, I just don't want to have a house that doesn't have access, that could theoretically be sold to somebody else who couldn't make any improvements on it.
At this time, because there is a unity of ownership, I don't know that that would be a big concern, given the fact that it's the same ownership on both parcels here. And so, I just don't see that that would be a concern. But if the council chooses to want to wait, then that can be considered and amended accordingly.
Yeah. I mean, it's not different. It's not much different from us not approving a final plan until the infrastructure's in place. Unless, of course, once they do the abandonment, there's a certainty that the way this track is configured, that that house would still have legal access. Because if that's... It's a 60-foot right-of-way?
It is a 60-foot right-of-way, but that house will still have access to Manville Road, 1128, and technically, legally, to also to Magnolia Parkway.
Okay. So, okay, I got you. I'm with you.
Yeah. Their property is that corner track there where the house is right now. It's that entire corner along FM 1128 and Magnolia Parkway.
Fair enough. I'm caught up. I'm okay moving forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Moving to Councilmember Hernandez.
I have no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
No comment, Mayor.
And Councilmember Owens?
No comment.
Moving next, the staff discussion.
No further comments, Mayor?
No further comments.
As I indicated earlier, this first reading will be under new business.
Okay. I will close, if I move to item number six, the public hearing. This time, I will close this at 6:40. And move to item number seven, which is the consent agenda, and ask Councilmember Perez to present the consent agenda. But also, at this point, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this point?
Mayor, at present, I have items J, as in Juliet, and K, as in Kilo. Are there any other members that would like to pull any other items?
You want A and what?
Juliet and Kilo, Mayor. J and K.
J, K, okay.
That's from Member Owens.
Any other items? Okay.
Good to move forward, Mayor.
Would you present the consent agenda, with the exception of J and K?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we accept the consent agenda, items A through M, with the exception of items J and K. So, moved.
Motion, and...
Second.
Second. Where... Secretary, we have motion, second, on floor.
Yes. Consent agenda, items A through M, approved, with the exception of J and K.
Okay. Moving in our...
Mayor, I'm sorry. We need to take a vote. Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Consent agenda, items A through M, passed, five to zero, with the exception of items J and K.
Okay. Moving in our...
Mayor, I'm sorry. We need to take a vote. Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Consent agenda, items A through M, approved, with the exception of J and K.
Okay. Moving in our...
Mayor, I'm sorry. We need to take a vote. Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Consent agenda, items A through M, passed, five to zero, with the exception of items J and K.
Okay. Moving, would you present item J?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-198. So, moved.
Second.
Motion, second, on the floor. Any further... Have motion and a second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item J, as was detailed in the August 1 background memo to the council, we have needed professional services to wrap up the Max Road project, some of the paperwork, and various final documentations required as part of this TechDOT-funded road. And the contractor we had originally engaged for this work is not performing, and so, we need Cobb Family to come in and sub in for them. So, we'll pursue that separately. But the item that's before you and Jermaine of the discussion is the Cobb Family Amendment here. That's all.
Council, have a question or comment or an item at this point?
I do, Mayor. If you could, Clay, or one of you, on the discussion on that, is there something that we should know of what went on, because evidently, PTP Transportation walked off the job?
Again, as we described, we're pursuing that separately with PTP, who had the original work, but they've left, and we'll make sure we're getting made whole, and aren't paying twice for something, or paying for something that's not being done. But Cobb Family's ready to sub in and finish this out, so we can get their reimbursement and get this thing closed.
Okay. What was the reason for walking off?
That's going to be a legal thing. Maybe we can follow up that, you know, but I don't want to answer for them. They... PTP left, and so, that's what we're... The cards were dealt with.
Okay. So, it kind of left us in a quandary on this one, or what?
I mean, that's... Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll be very upfront with you. I would not recommend y'all bringing any of them to the table again. If they walk off the job, they don't come back. I'm sorry, but you know, that's kind of the way I feel about it, is, you know, on something like that, there's different ways to resolve issues and concerns and things of that nature. But if you're going to walk off and leave us where we're at right now, and additional work for us to do on it, I'm telling you now, I don't want to see them back at the table on Pearland.
We agree with that, and that'll be part of our consultant selection process going moving forward.
All right. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? Have motion, second, on the floor here.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Okay. Information to the record, let's move to item K. Would you present that for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-197. So, moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, on the floor. That's the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As was detailed in July 11 background memo that was included in your packet, this project has been in the works for a long time. It is part of a large funding from TechDOT. We've been going through the motions for an advanced funding agreement, and we've gone back and forth with TechDOT. We believe now that they finally...
The person that's living in that house right now will be moving out of that house and that house is going to be torn down, and so being abandoned there.
Okay, on the off chance that they don't move forward with that, we would still have legal access? I guess my question is kind of leans towards, we're not going to cut them off to where if they have, if they decided they want to make improvements on that house, spares tear it down, they'd have to build a road to get to the, get to the house?
Yeah, I think I'll let the Jennifer come down and speak specifically to that situation.
Next, we have.
This young lady's going to speak for us. Ma'am, if you would please state your name and address for the purpose of the record.
Sure, I'm Jennifer Evans and we are the owners of 550, 5205 Kincaid. We own the house as well. The house is. We own the house as well and the tenant has moved out and the contractor, Chair of Demolition, has been released to take the house down. This is all part of a development of the detention area for the corner that council approved a CUP for a 711. So, all of this is part of that corner being developed.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
I appreciate your comments.
Just one quick question. This requires two readings, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And then the first item under new business this evening will be the first reading of this ordinance.
I just, maybe it feels kind of sloppy to do, if the house is going to get abandoned, maybe we should hold up on the second, second reading until the house is torn down and abandoned. That way, there's not, unless there's, unless there's a certainty that the house, if the plans don't move forward with the 711 and the right of ways abandoned, I just don't want to have a house that doesn't have access, that could theoretically be sold to somebody else who couldn't make any improvements on it.
At this time, because there is a unity of ownership, I don't know that that would be a big concern, given the fact that it's the same ownership on both parcels here. And so I just don't see that that would be a concern, but if the council chooses to want to wait, then that can be considered and amended accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not different, it's not much different from us not approving a final plan until the infrastructure's in place. Unless, of course, once they do the abandonment, there's not, there's a certainty that the way this track is configured, that that house would still have legal access. Because I, if that's, it's a, I'm sorry, it's a 60-foot right of way?
It is a 60-foot right of way, but that house will still have access to Mambo Road, 1128, and technically, legally, to, also to Magnolia Parkway.
Okay. So, okay, I got you, I'm with you.
Yeah, their property is that, that corner track there where the house is right now, it's that entire corner along FM 1128 and Magnolia Parkway.
Fair enough, I'm caught up, I'm okay moving forward, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have no comments, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
No comment, ma'am.
And Councilmember Owens?
No comment.
Moving next to staff discussion.
No further comments, ma'am. As I indicated earlier, this first reading will be under new business.
Okay. I will close, if I move to item number six, of the public hearing. This time, I will close this at 6:40. And move to item number seven, which is the consent agenda, and ask Councilmember Perez to present the consent agenda, but also, at this point, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this point?
Ma'am, at present, I have items J as in Juliet and K as in kilo. Are there any other members that would like to pull any other items?
You want A and what?
Juliet and kilo, ma'am. J and K.
J, K, okay.
That's from Member Owens.
Any other items? Okay.
Need to move forward, ma'am.
Would you present the consent agenda with the exception of J and K?
Yes, ma'am, I move that we accept the consent agenda, items A through M, with the exception of items J and K, so moved.
Motion and second? Where, Madam Secretary, we have motion, second, on the floor.
Yes. Consent agenda, items A through M, approved with the exception of J and K.
Okay. Moving in our.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need to take a vote. Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Consent agenda, items A through M, passed five to zero, with the exception of items J and K.
Moving, would you present item J?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2019-198, so moved.
Second.
Motion, second, and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Item J, as was detailed in the August 1 background memo to the council, we have needed professional services to wrap up the Max Road project, some of the paperwork and various final documentations required as part of this Tech dot funded road, and the contractor we had originally engaged for this work is not performing, and so we need Cobb Finley to come in and sub in for them. So, we'll pursue that separately. But the item that's before you and Jermaine of the discussion is the Cobb family amendment here. That's all.
Council, any question or comment on this item at this point?
I do, ma'am. If you could, Clay, or one of you, on the discussion on that, is there something that we should know what went on, because evidently PTP Transportation walked off the job?
Again, as we described, we're pursuing that separately with PTP who had the original work, but they've left and we're, we'll make sure we get made whole and aren't paying twice for something or paying for something that's not being done, but Cobb Finley's ready to sub in and finish this out so we can get their reimbursement and get this thing closed.
What was the reason for walking off?
That's going to be a legal thing, maybe we can follow up that, you know, but I don't want to answer for them. They, PTP left, and so that's what we're, the cards were dealt with.
Okay, so it kind of left us in a quandary on this one, or what?
I mean, that's, yes.
Okay, well, I'll be very upfront with you. I would not recommend y'all bringing any of them to the table again. If they walk off the job, they don't come back. I'm sorry, but you know, that's, that's kind of the way I feel about it, if, you know, on something like that, there's different ways to resolve issues and concerns and things of that nature. But if you're going to walk off and leave us where we're at right now, an additional work for us to do on it, I'm telling you now, I don't want to see them back at the table on Pearland.
We agree with that, and that'll be part of our consultant selection process going moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? Have motion, second, on the floor here.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Okay, with that information on the record, let's move to item K. Would you present that for our consideration?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2019-197, so moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As was detailed in July 11 background memo, that was included in your packet. This project has been in the works for a long time. It is part of a large funding from Tech Dot. We've been going through the motions for a advanced funding agreement, and we've gone back and forth with Tech Dot. We believe now that they've finally given us an agreement that they can live with and we as well, so that's, this is the paperwork for that reimbursement agreement. So, nothing else to add.
Okay. Council, have any comment on this item?
I do, on one of the items on here, I noticed that this is one that we were, said we're going to move 30,000 from the engineering right of way, that we didn't see, and I was just wondering, I went back through the estimate, I didn't see any right of way acquisition in there, and I was wondering where the 30,000 came from, or where was it at?
Any other question or comment from council?
Let's, I don't know, take a look, we have to catch up to you, because I don't think we knew.
I believe that that may have been in the original AFA, and since this is a replacement for that original AFA, because of Tech Dot having to get the numbers right, and then changing the form as well, that that 30,000 was then removed from right of way, because there wasn't a right of way acquisition in the project, and that was applied to the other, the construction part of the project.
Yeah, because I didn't see any place where we had any money set up for right of way acquisition on there, so when I saw it was moving, as part of the discussion was to move it, 30,000 from the right of way, and I didn't see where it was at. So, that was a, who was doing the construction inspection on that? It's 144,000?
Counselman Owens, the construction management aspect will be handled by Cobb Finley again, with that as part of their, all their previous semitels associated with doing LGGP projects with, with us and Tech Dot.
Okay. I didn't see that in there anywhere, so that's why.
Excuse me, I apologize for that. It's Freezing Nichols will be doing that work on the inspection, I apologize. And it's already awarded contract.
All right, well, that answered my two questions, thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? Hearing done, we have motion, second, on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Okay, with that information wrapped up, let's move to item number eight, which is matters of removal of consent agenda, and we just handled those two items. Item nine is new business. First item is, Councilmember Orlando, would you present the first item, new business?
Consideration and possible action for ordinance number 1580, so moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, on the floor. Staff report.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. This is the ordinance that is formalizing the abandonment process that we had the public hearing for earlier this evening. Again, it's a 60-foot unused right of way located at the intersection of Magnolia Parkway and FM 1128. And so, this again is just the first reading, the second reading is scheduled for August the 26th. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Question or comment from council? Hearing done, Madam Secretary, we have motion, second, on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
At item number two, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration possible action, first reading, ordinance number 2000T-30, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussions, staff report.
Thanks, sir. The, our unified development code, which governs private development standards and expectations throughout the city, I went through and made a number of recommendations for upgrades and updates to that, clarifications. The topics, they're all listed in the summary title, but these have been through public hearing and recommend these for your consideration tonight, first reading here.
I like the way they've been rearranged, a little easier to find.
Yes, the tables vastly improved.
If, if we need it, that's good. Council, have any question or comment on this item?
Ma'am, again, I'd just like to thank, I'd like to thank the work of everybody who participated in the committee to put this together, like to thank staff for all the work they did to manage all these changes, because it's in the audience, remember, former member Carbone was the chair of that committee, he did a lot of work to make sure that this, the, these changes, or the discussion of these changes progressed, so I think it's worth noting, all the work that was put in. It's easy to just pass the vote right here, but it was a good solid six months worth of work to just get, get the committee to, to make recommendations, talk it through, and get them before, before council for approval. So, again, just applaud everybody who participated.
Very good. Any other comment from council?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree on this. A lot of these changes allow for some of the businesses to be able to thrive a little bit better, lifting some of those restrictions and putting some restrictions in that also are beneficial to some of the residents that abut some of these businesses, so glad to see that we're able to get all that changed.
I just got one quick question on, you know, on some of the overlay district, we said on there, no outside storage on there, and I guess, I don't know, Pearland Parkway is one, and in the beginning, through their lows, where it's not able to put any kind of outside storage toward Pearland Parkway, but it's okay on the other side. And I've been noticing here lately, a lot of the storage is now coming to the Pearland Parkway side. Same thing with Home Depot, that happened on Dixie Farm Road.
There was a request from a couple of council members at an earlier meeting a few weeks ago with regard to storage, and that is one of the items that the commission is still looking at. There is going to be another packet of UDC amendments coming forward in the next couple of months, and one of those amendments will include changes to the storage requirements to bring everything more into compliance and be more equal.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I hadn't seen anything that we had changed it out of the overlay district, not to have storage on there, but that, and that's just two of the examples that, that I've seen on them.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, I will reiterate the comments of everyone else, this took a lot of work and we're really grateful for that. Just also reviewing it, it reminded me how many different classifications we have, and the, the fact that it can be kind of complicated, what goes into a certain proposed business getting a, requiring a CUP and another one not, and so, for instance, we had, we had the upholstery shop a couple of meetings ago, that because they would operate on cars, would do upholstery in cars, that they would be classified as an auto-oriented business, and so they had to come up for a CUP. But then you have, for example, a title-owned shop across at 35, or I'm sorry, Old Avon and Broadway, that opened up without a CUP, so grateful for all of the cleanup, and I think there's some more opportunities, both in terms of tightening up some areas and loosening others, that we can continue to do in the future.
Any other question or comment?
Just to add to everybody else, to say thanks to staff for this. I was on the committee and was, one of the first things I really did, kind of dive me into all of this, and it's very overwhelming, to say the least, so thanks for everything. And I just had one question as a point of clarification, which I think I've asked previously, but the facade requirements, just as a refresher for public curiosity, how will the changes that the state has brought forth for September affecting of this stuff, if it will at all?
The massage requirements were. No, yes, the facade requirements will still technically be in the code, but we have already begun informing builders and developers as they come in, that effective October 1, that we won't be enforcing those requirements.
But we're keeping them in?
It'll be part of a future package.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We've got a lot of work to get this where it is today, and it's in good shape, appreciate that. Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion, second, on the floor.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Item number three, we, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1416-2019, so moved.
Second.
Motion, another second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next four items are various parts of our building and fire protection codes. Time to time, we take a look and take our cue from national building codes and update to recognize modern standards, expectations, minimums that these provide. We make a few local amendments, very few, and so we're trying to align these with all those parameters. And so, the first these is number three, which is the electricity piece, but they all follow the same basic idea that I just mentioned, so that's it.
Good. Council, have any question or comment on this item? No. Hearing done, we have motion, second, on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Moving to item number four, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1296-2019, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion, I hear a second. We have a second, we're in staff report.
Likewise, this is the first reading for the building code section. Anything else, sir?
Council, any question or comment on this item?
Yes, ma'am, I have one. I'd like to propose a, one minor amendment to this. In the building code, or actually in our design criteria manual, we require rebar in the driveway within the right of way, which is appropriate, but there's nothing that forces the rebar to the remainder of the driveway. So, you, we've seen in a lot of these neighborhoods, the driveways past the sidewalk, inside the sidewalk, start floating, moving, cracking, because there's no reinforcement in it. Other cities that I'm aware of have added amendments to the building code that require rebar for, at very least residential driveways. So, I'd like to see if we can amend the code so we can have such, that same requirement.
Any other question or comment?
That's just the approach of it.
Yeah, so the approach, not the approach, the approach is in the right of way, and that is covered by our design, the engineering criteria, but, but when you get inside the right of way, that's no longer part of the EDCM. Technically, that can be part of the building code, that's where I've seen the amendment placed in, in other cities, that require that they place a rebar in the driveway up to, up to the building. There's no requirement that they do that, the builders aren't doing it, because they're not required to, they're cheaping it out, and what we've seen is, these neighborhoods start aging and these, these driveways just break apart, and it really is a terrible look. So, I think at least for any of the houses that are in the future, any remodels, significant remodels we get, we try and get, force the contractors to put that rebar in.
Also, any other comments? I'm sorry.
And ma'am, we don't, we have no objections, and we can bring that, incorporate that in the second reading, and/or, you know, if there's any challenges or concerns, we'll bring that up, but otherwise, we'll wrap that in the second reading.
Okay, so we can approve this meeting, first meeting?
Yes, sir.
Or as we. Make it up on the second.
Karen, I would assume I need to amend the motion to include that?
For staff to move forward, you can make a motion to amend, to include the rebar in the driveways, and then we can vote on the proposed amendment, I mean, on the amended motion, and then have a subsequent vote, yes.
Can you tell me how significant of an impact that would have if I were a homeowner, just redoing my driveway financially? I mean, would it?
It shouldn't have any, it should be included in the price. They're charging you for it, they're just not doing it.
Okay.
So, I would, I would make such an amendment, amend this, this item to include the request amendment to the 2018 IBC as written, as it will be written in the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion for.
Amendment.
Amendment to motion? Is there a second to that? And a second, okay. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion to amend, five to zero. Motion passed. Now we'll vote on the original motion.
Okay, now we have an amended motion on the floor. Council, have any further discussion on that item? Hearing done, Madam Secretary?
Councilmember, give me one second. Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number, new business item number five, Councilmember Owens?
Five or four?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration possible action, first reading, ordinance number 1210-2019, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
And this is the plumbing and gas sections of the building codes for your consideration, same ideas, so.
Bringing it up to date. Any other question or comments from council? Hearing done, Madam Secretary, we have motion, second, on the floor.
I did want to say that I just thank y'all, anytime y'all clean up language, it just always makes me so happy, so thank you.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number six, Councilmember Orlando?
Consideration and possible action, number 1211-2019, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion, staff report.
And this is the final of this, this group, and this is the very important fire protection code, local sections to update, and any local amendments for that.
Council, any question or comment regarding this staff report?
Just quick comment, ma'am. I know some of these things can be burdensome on, on some businesses that are either trying to remodel or add on, or something where they lose some of their grandfather clause to the way they are, but at the end of the day, it's all for safety, not only for the safety of that structure, but the surrounding safety, the surrounding structures' safety and the, the people in those structures, so.
Any further council reports? I think we'll have the staff have their way at this.
Nothing to add, sir.
Nothing else to do with that, okay. Motion, second, on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Moving to item number seven, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2019-204, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is the city's multi-year capital improvement program. We talked about this extensively at a meeting a few weeks ago. There was one request that it has been incorporated this, and that's for a future Independence Park Phase Two. It is recognized in one of the out years of this plan, and, but the rest of the balance of it, there are questions, but there weren't any changes suggested. This would be adopted by resolution if the council is so inclined. We do need to have ACIP, but this, we suggested in February that we remove this from the part of the rest of the budget discussion, just to get better focus on this and to allow us better focus on the balance of the budget. So, that's the only procedural change that we're, how we're dealing with that this year, so. But the document, you've seen this several times, and it's ready for your adoption if you're so inclined.
Okay, makes sense. Staff, council, have any question or comments regarding staff report?
Just want to thank staff for including Phase Two of Independence. Just want to thank staff for including Phase Two of Independence Park.
Good show, eh? It is. Madam Secretary, we have a motion, second on the floor here.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Moving to item number eight on our agenda, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2019-200, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you, sir. Item eight and nine go together. Council is well aware that a combination of agencies, BECTRA, Bezora County Toll Road Authority, and, I'm sorry, TechDOT, are making vast major improvements to state Highway 288, both to the free lanes and to the new toll lanes, and providing dramatically different direct connects throughout that area. Those agencies are building the road, and they will leave it as just the road, pretty basic, that it would function, but if there's any enhancements, long term, that will make the look and feel of that for the long term, the city has jumped into that, and through PDC, have, council is well aware, for years, we've been planning this, there's a plan for major landscaping enhancements, lighting, et cetera, that'll give the area a very positive look and feel, and so people know that they're entering an area that, you know, is, holds high standards. So the first major contract, we've awarded many contracts along these ways to get to this point, but number eight is the first of the actual implementation, if you will, and that is to essentially preorder the landscape material, and it's a long stretch and requires a lot of material. It's been recommended to us that we put the material itself on order, so that that can grow, and it's available when it's needed, it can get acclimated, make sure it's a high quality and will stand the test of time. So there was a contract that was put out, and we had two bidders, and we have two phases that we're recommending here. It's been reviewed by the consultants. This particular contract, because it is being funded by PDC, has been reviewed and endorsed by their board as well. I believe the management district also took a look at that and approved this contract at their level, so it's ready for the council. You are required to, we need your endorsement as well, because of the scale of this, and, but it's ready for your consideration, and so we can get this on order, and make sure that when we're ready for it in a year and a half or so, whenever that is, it's at the ready, and we can get this installed.
I think everybody's going to be very proud of what it looks like when it's finished.
Right.
Counsel, any question, comment about the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not always in favor of doing landscaping, especially through PDC. I understand it's an attraction to beautify the area for businesses to move in, but I think we could spend our money more wisely than doing landscaping.
Any other comment, counsel?
I've got one. On this district, they're on the management district, are they the ones, you said, the operation, or actually the maintenance on a yearly agreement, is about 1.1 million a year? Is, that's coming out of Pearland Management District Number Two, take care of that, it's not coming out of city budget?
Let Matt answer that.
Yeah, that's the purpose of the Pearland Municipal Management District Number Two, that they'll be taking care of all the maintenance for all these improvements.
All right, so it's estimated 1.1 million a year, just on the maintenance part of it, and so that would not be something that we would look at of putting in the actual budget for the city.
No, sir, no, sir.
Does that include the, all the landscape mowing and et cetera?
Yes, sir, that includes everything, mowing, painting, everything that'll be required to maintain all these improvements.
Just to piggyback off that, the city itself has miles and miles of right of way responsibility that we take care of. This would be a cut above, if you will, and for the specific corridor that's, you know, business intensive, so, but the city still retains vast responsibilities and upholds that for our own right of way landscaping and maintenance.
Any other comment from counsel?
I just had a quick one. So on both of these, we had two bidders, but it seems like in both instances, there was only one qualified bid submitted that, the second bidder in both cases, it was two different companies, but neither of them submitted a complete bid. I guess my question would just be, are there any steps that we can take to ensure that we have at least two bidders who are both going to fill it out and give us actually a competitive option?
I could start out, and then Matt can add to that, but, you know, we put this out, and, you know, the vendors are all tuned in, electronic, you know, world, and know, you know, what's out there, so I'm comfortable myself that, you know, there's awareness. It might, two things that have come up on these kinds of things, one is the scale and the scope of it, and we really are locked in, so, you know, it's not going to fit with every typical landscape firm, if you will. And the second is, you know, everybody's busy, there's a lot of work going on, and so, you know, it's probably just going to do that, so, you know, we'd love to have more as well, obviously, but, you know, we just, you know, it is what it is in terms of like people to respond, and I guess the alternative wouldn't be appealing to try to go out again and, you know, roll the dice again. We're, you know, delaying the start of the materials, no guarantees, you know, the scope of the work isn't going to change, so there's not a lot of great options, but here, loud and clear, we'd love to, if more people were to bid, but it's going to kind of, by the nature of this, not invite a whole bunch of different ones, so, I don't know if Matt can add to that, but.
And we did a tremendous, we had a great pre-bid meeting for the procurement services, and just ended up only getting two bids, and I think the real key for us will be on Phase Four when we come up, which will be the large contract for all this work that we get, you know, good bidder mix, but that'll be a much larger contract than this small one that we have for Phase Three. So Phase Four will be the real large contract, which we'll have for the entire corridor.
Was there something in here that says that to approve this, that would give them the opportunity to go out and get some, go ahead and start making some acquisition, I guess, of the shrubs, or whatever they need to do at this point in time?
Yeah, so Landscape Art, who's the bidder we're recommending, they are going to go out and procure all these trees and bushes that we need, and we'll start growing them in a nursery, so then when we have our Phase Four contract, that contractor will then get those, will provide those as part of the contract, all the trees and shrubs will already be purchased.
So if they're going to go ahead and start ordering these and putting them in there, we have no responsibility, if something happens, they all die?
No, they'll be responsible for bringing them to the site in a condition that meets our specifications.
Something y'all putting in the contract to take care of us on that, protect us on it, okay.
Any other comment, counsel?
Yeah, Mayor, I just touch on what Member Moore said, I guess, for the other side of the coin, I suppose, is, I look at this, think about what we're doing and the money coming out of EDC, and that's sales tax supported, and as a business owner here in town, I do tend to support beautification projects, especially as Bezora County starts to grow, you know, we want people to see Pearland as a stopping point, somewhere nice and attractive. I think it's always been, at least for me, I drive through somewhere, and it's nice, I want to stop and shop and spend my money, so hopefully it'll give us a return on that investment, so I am for this, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct, you're right. Any other comments, counsel?
Yes, Mayor. Of all the shrubbery and trees and et cetera that we're putting in, I see that we're also doing irrigation with this, how indigenous are these trees and shrubs and everything that we're putting in? I mean, I don't want to put something in that we got to water, you know, five times a day, or it's going to die, or is very prone to disease, or something that is planted in this area.
Let Jason Miller, who's our architect with Clark Condon, answer that question.
Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor for Councilmember.
One second, Mayor, we still got the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One person's going to ask.
Didn't see him go up there, sorry.
I'm going to answer the question, thanks. Jason Miller with Clark Condon, we're the landscape architects. All the material that we're proposing for this, although we do.
A little closer.
Although we are using irrigation, it's all native and adaptive plant material, so we're doing our best to minimize the amount of water we're going to put down, and 90% of the irrigation we're going to put in is drip, so it's directly putting water onto the root zones, so you're going to use a lot less water planting or irrigating this stuff, and with the controllers that we're using, we're not going to be doing it five times a day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment, counsel?
Just wanted, just one quick thing, I noticed this is on both bids, but just a comment on page 25 of 25, it says, at the very bottom in the notes, due to cost, will need to reevaluate scope of project to meet anticipated project budget. Is that, is, I see that in both, but can I get some clarification on that?
I don't have the page number that you're on, is that on the bit tab?
The final page, yeah, at the very bottom.
That's a comment by one of the reviewers. Public Works would have had that comment. That's just because, obviously, it was above the actual engineer's estimate, or the architect's estimate.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I was a little bit concerned on, between the landscape art and also the George Meeks, talking about $95,000 difference in going with the higher bid, but I will tell you that I did make a few calls to some of the contractors that have used them, and they said that this is probably your best thing you could have done. I appreciate you looking at it from that standpoint. They didn't go into detail, other than the fact, you know, that they were glad to see that Pearland went with somebody else on it.
I have to go to comments, thank you so much. Any other comment, counsel? Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Moving in our agenda for Madam Number Nine, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2019-196, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is an amendment to an existing contract for professional services. This relates directly to what you just voted for. We've had Clark Condon alongside for the design, they'll be providing the inspections and the additional work as this project moves forward. This particular amendment for your consideration is an additional $85,000 onto the contract amount for these latest phases, brings the total amount, as noted here, to the 375 amount. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, counsel, any question or comment on the staff report? I catch you guys too quick, Eric. Comment?
I've just got one quick comment on there, that in the estimate that we saw, there's 55,000 going to BECTRA, or managing, is that just under the total contract, or what?
The 85,000 before you hear, to the, for, to BECTRA, I'm sorry?
I didn't pull it up, but I've got it on my notes, that's item number nine, there's construction administration, I guess that's what it was, of 55,000 for BECTRA.
That'd be the construction administration over the current work we have, you know, the first phase of work we have with the hardscape that's going on right now, that BECTRA is completing for us.
Does that go to BECTRA, though, or?
No.
No, that's just the piece.
Clark Condon.
Clark Condon's work for the BECTRA piece, so that's the majority of it south of Clear Creek. This money's not going to BECTRA, if that, I'm sorry if I missed.
No, it's in the, it's in the estimate.
I understand, but it's for the construction administration for, by Clark Condon on the piece that's in BECTRA, I guess is that best way.
BECTRA's doing work on behalf of the city. It's a part of their contract, and that's what that's for, that construction administration.
All right, it's just confusing that, that within the estimate, additional 55,000 was going to BECTRA for our contract administration.
Again, it's not going to BECTRA, but I hear, see why you're, it's not, yeah. And this particular amendment doesn't have anything going for that piece of it, apparently, so.
Any other question, but?
Yes, Mayor. Does National Works Inc. have a representative here? I guess our money's not that important to them.
Well, that's the next agenda item. Yeah, this is National, this is Clark Condon.
Oh, sorry, I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
Any other question, counsel? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Information wrapped up, let's move to item 10, Councilmember Owens?
Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2019-182, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is the contract for maintenance of our existing sewage system. We go through an extensive process, I and I, to identify areas that are failure, where the system's not tight enough, and we have infiltration, which causes additional expense, and just part of our general maintenance responsibilities of the system. I've gone through identified manhole areas that are the most at risk, and that's where we got the $650,000 for the immediate work, but then this contract also allows us for an additional 200 on top of that, because there's no doubt, once we get into these areas, identify them, and then continue work, that there'll be other major areas, so this is just looking ahead, so we can stay somewhat ahead of this. We have a large system, and this is getting after two different predominantly areas in town that are 10-plus years for service, and so the maintenance would take care of fixing all those. So that's all I have, sir.
Counsel, any question or comment on the staff report?
Well, just got one, may expand it to two, but anyway, on, I know, we've been doing quite a bit on that, on the infiltration inflow. Do we know about how much extra that we're processing right now through this, of either manholes or pipelines?
So that I and I report is pretty thorough, and it identified, you know, during wet weather, what the spike is, I don't know if there's an easy way to summarize that, anybody? And what that might be attributable to, from the manhole piece of it?
We can get that information, I think it was Frieson Nichols that just completed the wastewater master plan, so we should have that data available for you, just not sitting here at my fingertips right this second. So we do actually have that data.
Yeah, that would be some good information to have, I mean, we've been going through an I and I for several years right now, and so.
Councilmember Owens, just as a correction, I'm sorry, Robert is telling me that they are wrapping up that wastewater master plan that includes that data, so we should have it soon.
Well, we just want to make sure that we're making headway through there. We come in and process a lot of the water that's coming in, and then, you know, spending this kind of money on it, there's got to be something that we can look and see that maybe some point in time, we'll get to the end of the line, some point in time, hopefully. I don't know who will or not, but, but at least, yeah, but, yeah, but at least we'll be able to see that, you know, that we're saving a little bit, based upon spending this kind of money on the inflation.
Yeah, I mean, it's never all done, I mean, as soon as you get done with the piece, it's something else that's going to go south on you, but I hear you, so. This gives us a plan, so we're not, we're focusing our efforts and making the.
But I hear you, so this gives us a plan, so we're not, we're focusing our efforts and making the most use of that.
Any other comments from counsel?
Just one quick question, mayor. When they do, when they do any of the replacements on the manhole covers, is there any work done to the, I guess, the roadway piece of it around it? I know sometimes the, some of the asphalt roads around manhole covers, they tend to like, just like the railroad tracks, they ball up around the manhole cover. Is there anything that's done with that piece when they redo the manholes?
And counsel, in this particular plan, that, that we do have some little things covered here and they're like traffic control, but not any particular plans for replacement of the asphalt. We will do that in-house if we need to, or the concrete panels surrounding the manhole. In this instance, this is mainly a manhole, dealing with the manhole liners. The city put in way back in the day, the old T-lock liners that have failed everywhere. I even took them out of the specs for the city of Houston before I left. This is going in with a spray liner to actually line it. So, this is not, we're not expecting any major physical construction where we're going to be digging these things out and putting in new manholes, maybe setting new manhole rings, adjusting asphalt, concrete around it if we need to. But this will be liners mostly. And if you look in your packet, you'll see some pictures of just outright failed liners back in the day. And this is what we're looking at now. We have over a hundred manholes we've identified that have physically failed, that we put our eyes on and through smoke testing. But if we do run into this, we've got a great concrete crew and distribution in Cleckson. I'm really proud of them and we will work to get it fixed as we go.
Okay, thank you. And that will be done through our public works department?
If we can. I'm not going to sit here and lie to you until we can do everything.
Okay.
But if we can, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Now, now's my chance to ask. Is there anybody here from the National Works Inc. that we're no representative? Okay, thanks.
And then I just had a quick question. So, i- is it safe to say then with the introduction of those new liners and also the application of the corrosion-resistant material, can we expect that that will extend the life of these covers and the entire system beyond what they lasted this last time around?
Yeah, some of these, if you look at your packets, you'll see this may seem kind of new already, like we're doing some in the Shadow Creek area that are only about eighteen years old. We would expect to get at least another twenty-five years out of these. We're just now starting to see the gravel, the aggregate out of some of these. So, if we catch them now and line them, I see no reason why we couldn't get another fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. I obviously can't promise that. But the new, the new method that we're doing now is a spray in liner. They completely dry it out, spray it on, very much like doing a bed liner, except, you know, not one you get from the dealer that pills off after your first year owning it. So, we're hoping to get another twenty years plus out of these.
Thank you.
And I am told that our consultant rep is actually, was on their way and they're currently stuck somewhere in traffic.
Good. They're really difficult to beautify, I'll tell you that. Any other question or comment from counsel? Did you have a comment?
Yeah. Okay, if they're on their way, can, I'll make a motion to table this until the end of the meeting. Yeah, postpone until the end of the meeting. I make a motion to postpone till the end of the meeting.
Second.
Anything else from counsel? Madam Secretary, I think we got a motion second here.
Counselor Member Hernandez, how do you vote?
The motion was to postpone until the end of the meeting, mayor.
Aye.
Number ten, item ten?
Yes, mayor.
Yes, mayor.
Oh, okay. I mean, does that run? Give me the item numbers. Item eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, is that the request?
Just move ten.
We're moving.
Oh, okay, I'm moving ten to the end of the meeting, okay. I've got you. Well, that's the place, we'll let counsel member Owens, number ten, that's hanging there for a while. Are we moved item number eleven?
Mr. Mayor?
We, we have to move, we have to postpone it since it's, we have a motion second postponed, so we need to go ahead and have that.
Oh, okay, you got a motion second to postpone, okay.
Yeah, let me say one thing in defense of that, you know, that, as we've talked about it up here several times, these contracts that we have out here, it, you know, it's our taxpayers' money going out the door on something like that. And it, and that being the case, we'd like to see the individuals that are getting the contracts to be here. I mean, if you're getting a million-dollar contract, it would be, you know, for you to be here for the, for the meeting to get that.
We're going to move it.
I know the other time, we've had some of our staff that says we can, you know, we can answer those questions. Well, the thing that we look at, you know, I'm sure you can answer those questions, but yet still, the contract is not with our staff, it's with the individual coming in. So, that's one of the reasons that we've talked about that and the reason we want to postpone it to the end of the meeting.
We have a motion second to move item ten down.
Counselor Member Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor Member Orlando?
Aye.
Counselor Member Perez?
No.
Motion, we need to break this tie.
Not a tie. I'm the only no.
I thought he said no.
I'm the only no, and there's only five of us. It's four to one.
Four to one. Your motion to postpone this, item number ten, to the end of the meeting, passed. Four to one.
We'll talk about it later, in other words. After item number eleven, which is Orlando, is going to present to us at this point.
Consideration impossible action resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash one nine two, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, mayor. As we detailed in the background memos, the surface water treatment plant has several packages and moving parts, very, very complex project, largest that the city has ever undertaken or possibly will. This particular contract with Ardua, they've been working with us alongside. And this is for essentially an owner's rep kind of relationship where they're working with and coordinating all the different contracts and packages, make sure they all fit together and go. So, they have a high level of expertise that can't be replicated. And we would need but for this particular project and then be done. So, the contract and the professional services is packaged up here for your consideration, just under three million dollars worth of assistance, so. But this says, like all the projects associated with this, has been anticipated in the project budget and the financing and all the financial projections that you've seen worked through.
Okay. Does, also have any question or comment, some of this?
Just a quick one, mayor. This whole water service treatment plant comes with a huge price tag, but it sets us up in the long run, in the future, to be successful in the city with, with water. When I think down the road in the future, there are going to be some municipalities that are, and they are hurting or will be hurting for, for water, this, this sets us up really good. I hate the price tag, but I feel it's, it's something that we really need to do. And I don't have to ask if the representatives in the audience, because I see them.
Counsel, any other comments from counsel?
Yeah.
Thinking about, thinking about.
You know, this is a, a big project for us on here. And that was some of the concern that I had the last time when we had discussed this. And I know right now it's probably too far gone to stop, you know, on there. But when we looked at it in the beginning of getting the land for it, the whole point was to bring water from southeast treatment plant over to the west side and then terminate on the west side, water that we were getting from the city of Houston on that side, which was a lot larger or greater cost than what was bringing out of the southeast plant because we are owners in that plant in Houston. But it's my understanding now that now we're not going to terminate that contract from the city of Houston. We're going to maintain that contract. And that's kind of a big concern, you know, doubling up on, on that. The other part is, too, the information and the plan that's in here is very extensive. In there, it's a lot of work that's going to be going on and putting together for the, roughly the three million dollars that's going to be charged to do that. But it's pretty obvious as we go through that we do not have the people on staff to do that. There's a lot of operational plans that goes on in there. It's a lot to it. So, that's why the, in my discussions earlier, talking about this, I would suggest that before we go out and hire anybody to do anything on running this plant, we look in the industry to find companies, Lower Colorado River Authority, you know, yeah, they are, that, these people that do this for a living. And, you know, because in ours, you know, to run this treatment plant, we've got to have somebody there running it, treatment plant. You've got to have people, an excess of staff through there because of vacation, sick time, time off and whatever, to make sure that people there, you know, twenty-four hours a day to run that plant. So, that was my big concern on this. But, you know, even going through and looking at the backup on this one and everything that's going to be done in there to set this up and go through there, this proves to be very, very extensive through there. And this is something we've never done through a surface water treatment plant and doing that. And we can probably say we can go out and hire all the people to do it. But I, you know, I just want us to come in and take a look at it first and see if there's somebody out there to discuss it with them and see what the price is to come in and operate and manage that, that contract or that treatment plan. I just want to go on record saying that, that's pretty extensive.
Any other counsel comments or questions? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second on the floor for her, sir.
Counselor Member Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor Member Orlando?
Aye.
Counselor Member Perez?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
That took away, moved in item number twelve, counsel member Perez, would you do the honor?
Thank you, mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash one seven seven, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a contract for a land purchase. We have council awarded the water and sewer portion of the McCard Road project. We're close to finishing up the land acquisitions for the road itself. And we expect to be bidding this over the winter and starting construction for that major east-west road. Looking forward towards that. And this particular land piece will be integral for the stormwater management for the entire corridor. It's one of the last pieces that is contiguous and has enough land to be able to do something with. And so, we've been able to work with the property owner, come to terms that are fair for all involved. The city's portion is detailed there. We're about two-thirds of this. And then, working with Presoria Drainage District Four, they've stepped up and they're paying six hundred thousand dollars for the land itself. So, once we have this locked in, we'll be able to incorporate this into the last of our planning for the stormwater work and continue to make sure we have a first-class project, so that's it.
Counsel, any question or comment?
I have one question, mayor. The, the bridge over Bailey Road right now is, it's pretty, it's elevated pretty high. I don't know when, if that's because of some engineering math that it has to be that way or what. But when we redo this, is there, is there any way that it can be maybe a little bit lower? So, it's not such, shut, uh, can't even talk tonight, such a steep grade going over the railroad tracks?
So, that's actually the next item up, but.
I'm ahead again, sorry.
Yeah, I know, it's all right, you're, appreciate you being here.
I'm trying to get out of here.
I know, I know. So, yeah, this is the McCard Road project and this is just the land for that one. And then, we'll be ready for the next one.
I believe that was discussed in exec session, then we had a, right. Any further comment for counsel? Hearing none, madam secretary, I believe we have motion second here.
Counselor Member Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving to item number twelve, or item thirteen, counsel member Hernandez, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Moore. Excuse me, thank you, mayor, counsel member Moore. This is consideration, impossible action resolution number R two zero one nine dash two zero three, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Just real quick, this is one of the projects that was part of the voter-approved road improvements with the two thousand nineteen bond issue. And that is to extend another lanes over Bailey Road, over the railroad tracks and bridge. You know, as a bridge, it's more complex and has a lot more intricacies to it. Went through professional services solicitation and recommending Freezzen Nichols. And maybe Mr. Everstine, somebody wants to talk about the bridge approach, how that grades might shape up and line up, so.
Yeah, and my concern with that is, is with us putting the, the fire station down there kind of at the bottom of the hill, it kind of, I don't know, I think it creates some issues going forward. But if it was a little more level, it'd probably be a whole lot better traffic-wise and coming over that bridge and hitting a stoplight or something right there.
Counselor Moore, thank you for your question. The height of the bridge is already set and that is due to dealing with the railroad and how high they require it above their loads. So, we'll have to match that grade beam elevation when we go back to them on the permits. Also, regarding the entire aspect of that road, that was set up and why our fees are what they are from Freezzen Nichols is they had done previous work in the embankment and they had done the previous design, the existing bridge that's there as well. So, that's how we were able to work very well with getting the fees where they are today. The other aspect with regards to Fire Station Seven that you're talking about is that we've looked at that and this is a good location, there is plenty of site distance associated coming off of that ramp, be able to make that work.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other question or comment, counsel? Any no question or comments? We have motion second on the floor, madam secretary.
Counselor Member Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor Member Orlando?
Aye.
Counselor Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving to item number, moving to item number fourteen on our agenda. Counselor Member Moore, would you share your thoughts on our number fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, and then we're.
Now I'm behind, so, okay. Consideration possible action resolution number R two zero one nine two oh two, so moved.
Second.
Have motion second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you. And do appreciate counsel being here. I know several, you're not feeling a hundred percent. But this contract is a recommendation for professional services. Another one of the projects was identified in the drainage part of the two thousand nineteen bond issue. And this is in the Willow Crest subdivision. It's a major work. I believe this was, the original subdivision was done outside of the city or definitely before our current road and drainage standards. So, we're going back and retrofitting lots of different pieces of that. Cobb Finley did the initial P E R, so they performed well and recommending going forward with them for the design services so we can get into construction as soon as possible. But this is another piece of, as promised, with the two thousand nineteen bond issue, getting after, getting those projects underway.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I believe we have motion second on the floor, madam secretary.
Counselor Member Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Member Owens?
Aye.
Counselor Member Orlando?
Aye.
Counselor Member Perez? Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Based on counsel motion, we will go back and pick up item number 10. And I believe, Councilmember Owens presented that, and I think the motion was made by Councilmember Hernandez.
Make it short, did the contractor show up?
No, they're still showing us 30 minutes out based on what they're texting us, Councilman Perez.
Maybe they should have left earlier.
I agree. I will say they've done a lot of work for us in the past and Capital Projects went through this plan with us and looked at it and said that they've done some really good work for us in the past.
I'll just say, look, there was nothing that came up in the item that required their, their particular input, so I don't think there's anything, their presence is really going to affect the vote. But I'm with, I'm in solidarity with my, the other council members. We, we need to express, particularly $850,000, I'm sure that's no insignificant amount to this company. If it were me and my company, I'd have left at three to be here at five if I had to. So maybe if we can continue to express to them that it is a preference of Pearland City Council, that if we're giving them money, that they show up. I will still vote to allow this to move forward. I'm not sure of the other council members, but it's, I think it's important to let them know it's, it puts them at risk of delaying their contract if they don't show up to at least be here to answer questions. And frankly, it's just rude.
Yes, sir, we'll reiterate it. Agreed with you fully.
Where should I leave us?
Mayor, I think we just vote on whether we want to either move forward with this item. I don't get the sense that there's enough members that want to vote the, vote the contract down, but it's either we postpone it until they're, the contractor's willing to show up or, and delay the, the work, or whether we want to just move forward with it now. I would say I'm, I'm ready to move forward, but we would need three other members to agree.
You have no problem with the vote at this point?
I have a problem with them not being here, but I don't think that their presence necessarily changes the outcome of the vote, so I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, especially since it's work we need to do.
I think if staff understands the issues that some of our council members have with this particular case, they would probably be able to address them, I believe.
From the staff's recommendation, is it emergency that we go ahead and approve tonight or postpone it to the next meeting?
We have actually already pushed this back through several meetings. We would like to proceed with this tonight, but we will, of course, take your direction.
Mayor and Councilman, we understand the point. We do request, and as Mayor Perez said, I mean, it's ridiculous. If you got a contract, it seems like you plan ahead and understand the dynamics, but you'd be punishing us more, frankly, if we had to prep it up and list it in the agenda and get it all ready again. And we can make them, somebody meet them here at half an hour and yell at them when they're here, but.
So what's hanging out there is $85,000, huh?
$850,000.
Yeah.
Well, is the council willing to accept the vote?
Are there, I mean, fairly, are there two other members that wish to move forward with it? If not, then I'll, I'll move to postpone. But I think we should just go ahead and move forward with it.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
What's your, what's your recommendation?
We, we have, we have two other members along with me that are ready to vote tonight. I think we go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, I think that probably we will, but I think it would be incumbent upon the staff to make sure that the people get their contracts that they're sitting here next time, because I don't, I don't think we'll push it through, you know, regardless if it's $50,000 or if it's a million dollar. The contracts are coming from the city of Pearland here. And my concern is, and I know that, that probably each and every one of you could answer each question that we had had, but our contract's not with you, it's with the client.
Well, we're not arguing the principle whatsoever. We tell them to be here. So it's not going to be incumbent upon us. It's up to you whether you want to move forward or not. It's your discretion completely. We've just outlined the issues and presented it, but we tell them to be here and then it's up to them to be professionals and grownups from there, so we can't do any more than that, so.
And you said they've done satisfactorily in the past on previous projects. Yes, Councilman, they have. They've worked for us in the past.
Madam Secretary, I believe the council would like to vote.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have to remove it from the table first before we can vote on it.
That would be the correct process under Robert Trul's order, is to have a motion to remove it from the table. Once that motion has been voted on, then they can, then a formal vote on the actual item itself.
So moved. We're removing it from the table. We did table it to a specific port, port of time. Are you sure?
Technically, postponement is to a future meeting, but in a table is within a meeting. And so under, this is technically, it was really a table. So we tabled it to the end of the meeting, came back to it, and so it would be officially a motion to remove from table.
All right, so moved.
Table motion.
Clearing the table. We got a motion second to clear the table.
You got to bring it back up.
Yes, sir.
You got to bring it back up.
Yeah, we just did. We're good. We're ready to vote on removing the table. We're removing. Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion to remove from the table, pass forward to one.
I can't hear but five people.
Now we'll vote on the motion.
Okay, now where are we at this point?
We're voting on the motion.
Ready to vote on the.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
No. Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Motion passed, three to two.
Moving in our agenda to item number 10, council, mayor issues for council consideration. There are none at this point, other business, none. Adjournment, we are, which permits me to adjourn at 7:53.